John Stouffer, First United Methodist Church. If you so choose, please stand. At this time, I will ask if you will please silence your cell phones and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Shall we pray together? God, in this moment, we offer you our thanks and praise for the love that you pour out upon us, for the roles and responsibilities you have called each of us to, and for the opportunities to serve you and to serve our great city. We give you praise. We pray for one another, we pray for our families, we pray for those who are in deepest need in our city. And as our City Council meets, God, we pray your Holy Spirit to rest upon each of them, that as they lead and guide all of us, we may build this city to be the one that you have called us to be, the light on the hill that shines out as an example for all. We ask this in your precious Son's name and all God's people say it. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Gitz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we have two proclamations. And I will ask Councilmember Mayor Protim Samuel if he will please read the first one.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Whereas on National Maritime Day, we honor the men and women who throughout our history have served with professionalism, dedication, and patriotism in the United States Merchant Marine. We recognize these seafaring merchant mariners for helping to fuel our economy, maintain our sea power, and support our national security. Whereas merchant mariners extend goodwill into all parts of the world, serving as a peaceful United States presence on the international waterways. Today, American mariners facilitate the import and export of billions of dollars of goods, including fuel, agriculture products, and raw materials through the marine transportation system. They are also among the first to respond to help their fellow citizens in the wake of natural disasters. And whereas during times of war, merchant mariners can courageously sail into combat zones to provide sea lift for the Department of Defense, carrying weapons and supplies to Americans' fighting forces. In every conflict, United States citizen mariners have answered the call to duty and risked their lives. Some have sadly made the ultimate sacrifice for their country. And whereas because the United States merchant mariners play a central role in bringing American goods to market and in bolstering our military readiness abroad, we must encourage more people to pursue careers on American waterways and oceans of the world. And whereas a joint resolution approved by the United States Congress, May 20, 1933, has designated May the 22 of each year as National Maritime Day to commemorate the first transoceanic voyage by a steamship in 1819 by SS Savannah. And now, therefore, the Mayor, Robin Muton, the Mayor of the City of Beaumont, applaud local maritime representatives in Beaumont, as well as throughout the nation, and do hereby proclaim the day of May the 22, 2022, as National Maritime Day in Beaumont, and call upon all the citizens to observe May 22 with participation in appropriate programs and activities to support maritime efforts in our community. And accordingly, the mayor is here to, and set her hand, and calls the Seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on this 17th day of May in the year 2022. And accepting this proclamation, we will ask Ivan Mobley, Executive Director of Seafarers Centers, please come forward and accept the proclamation. And please have a word.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley.
Thank you.
Thank you. She has to sign it. I'll give it to her to sign, and you can get it.
Yes.
Can someone take a picture?
Don't worry about it.
Everybody pile in. Go sideways with it. Maybe get a few of them. You got three.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Please have a word, Mr. Mobley, if you'd like.
I just want to, I just, don't touch the mic, right? I just want to thank all of y'all for having us here today, and thank you, Mayor, for recognizing May 22. So I appreciate it, and thank y'all very much.
Thank you. I will read the next proclamation, and it is for Hurricane Preparedness Week, which will be prepared, but we won't be having one. Whereas across the nation, we set aside a week every May to raise awareness of the devastating impacts hurricanes can bring to communities, neighborhoods, and local economies. The Texas coastline and inland communities such as Beaumont are at a greater risk of hurricanes during the six-month period that runs from June through November. As a result, we must come together and prepare for these potential life-threatening forces of nature. Whereas hurricanes are powerful and destructive forces that can inflict damage on our community and pose a serious threat to the lives and property of the citizens of Beaumont. Consequently, we must remain vigilant during hurricane season and stay aware of the potential for severe weather that can accompan- that can accompany tropical systems. Whereas hurricanes and tropical systems combined are historically known to cause the worst disasters in U.S. history. The resultant destruction taught us that participating in preparedness for severe weather must become a priority in our households and communities. Whereas before the 2022 hurricane season began, the citizens of Beaumont are encouraged to take the time to sign up for emergency alerts, review plans for shelter and evacuation, bill your emergency kits, check your insurance coverage, and documents for your property, strengthen your financial preparedness, and develop a plan to keep in touch with your loved ones. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as Hurricane Preparedness Week in Beaumont, and urge all citizens to remain mindful of the dangers presented by hurricanes, to stay informed about current threats, and to take steps towards preparedness. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, has here to set my hand and calls the Seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, May 17, 2022. Mayor Robin Muton. And accepting will be Shaquina Nobas, our Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. And any staff that you have with you, please come forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is probably the most you guys are going to hear from me all year. That's what the prayer is, right?
Right.
Well, today I brought with me Gillian Cassidy and Jeff Phillips. These are our staff members that work in our Emergency Operations Center full-time throughout the year. And we just want to come forth and remind the citizens that June 1st is right around the corner. And now is the time for you to be preparing for hurricanes as they may impact us as we are a coastal jurisdiction. We are urging our citizens that may be medical fragile or have access or functional needs to go online and register through the State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry, most commonly known as 211. So we want to encourage those citizens to do that. We use that data to be able to reach them and have access to them, have access to their information so that we can ensure that their needs are met. We also want to encourage citizens to start going over your emergency preparedness plans. Councilman Samuel always says we know a thing or two because we've been through this a couple times. And so we want to just basically highlight that and say that you should have your plans in place. If you don't, we are available to help assist any business or entity that would like to get their plans, establish them in place, and encourage our citizens to go out and review those plans just to make sure that they are very well prepared. We thank each and every one of you for your continued support for this program throughout the entire year. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations and recognitions for today. Now is the time for any citizen, if you would like to speak, on consent agenda items number one through four. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. The City Manager, at this time, may I have the reading of item number one?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, item number one is to consider a resolution establishing guidelines for a person submitting specific reapportionment proposals. The 2020 census shows a total population decrease for the City of Beaumont to be 3,014 people since the 2010 census. This decrease in population triggers the responsibility of the City Council to evaluate what impact this decrease has on the four current single-member electoral wards of the city. It is helpful to the redistricting process to adopt criteria and guidelines that would assist the council in its efforts to evaluate and adopt a fair and lawful reapportionment plan. In the event a plan is submitted to the city by the public, the guidelines established will ensure that each plan submitted will be given due consideration. You may recall, last week, Mr. Pullum with the Borquez Law Firm gave a presentation on reapportionment, also known as redistricting. And he outlined some guidance for the submittal of these plans, and they are outlined in the attached resolution. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Duryo.
I just want to know, will this process be avail- how will the citizens that want to submit a map, how will they be able to get the information for participating in this process and submitting citizen maps and things like that?
So at around April 29, the city did send out letters to people we've identified as community leaders and organizations. Several members received that, and we spread that out. The information will also be available on our Facebook page.
Okay, so they use that or contact?
They can contact anyone in the city, in the community development or the legal department. We can assist them on how they can do that.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, item number two is a resolution adopting criteria for use in the reapportionment of Councilmember electoral wards. Similar to the last item, this is a result of the 2020 census and reapportionment process. Again, the, this was discussed last week in a work session about establishing the criteria by which the reapportionment or redistricting process will take place. You see attached in the resolution are the rules outlining that process, and the administration is recommending approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is to approve a contract with JMPKL, Inc., doing business as the lube shop of Beaumont to provide preventative maintenance for city vehicles. Bids were requested for an annual contract to provide preventative maintenance services such as oil changes, tire checks, fluid checks, and grease checks. Specifications allow for a one-year contract with the option of two renewals of a one-year term at the same pricing as the awarded contract. Preventative maintenance services provided in the contract will cover approximately 520 city vehicles. Bids were requested, were requested, rather, from 12 vendors with three responses. The lube shop submitted the lowest qualified bid with an estimated annual cost of $125,387.90. This pricing reflects an increase of approximately 5%. Should be noted that Law, Inc., DBA Johnsons, also submitted a bid, however, was determined to be incomplete as no signatures were attached. Funds are available in the city's fleet fund, and the administration recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. You've heard the item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the contract.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Yes, Mr. Manager. I see on here we have a bid that was incomplete bid with no signature required. I understand someone attempted to bid, didn't fill it out properly. This kind of goes back to what I stated previously. This bid process with some of these new people that are actually bidding, I really think it'd be a good idea to get something together where we actually go out in the community and educate people on how to properly fill them out. Because, yeah, this bid is the best qualified on paper, but it was a lower bid, but clearly they didn't fill out the application properly. So if we can kind of do something in the future where we kind of go out in the community and educate our citizens on how to properly fill out a bid in just the process period, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, sir. And just to follow up, we, I know the purchasing, the group is looking at different, essentially vendor fairs and going out and trying to get vendors and try to bring in. Because again, the more vendors we get, the more bids we get, usually the better, so. And then also, we are looking at a software system that will enable bids to come in electronically. The good thing about those kinds of systems is they essentially require you to do certain steps before you could submit the bid. So we feel like that's going to go a long way in avoiding some of this in the future.
And to that extent, the bid package when they're submitted does have an instruction sheet. Sometimes, I think this one was just overlooked. In the informal bid process, they make you sign each page because you're bidding on each section to make you commit to seeing that that's what you submitted. And there's also a final requirement that you sign it at the end because it is essentially a contract. I just feel like it was just overlooked in this requirement. But they, but they do provide instructions, and their office is open for questions at all times as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number four is to authorize the interim city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with Greenscape Six, LLC, for the contract, excuse me, concrete pavement repair citywide Phase Two project. On February 15, 2022, Council authorized Resolution 22-056, awarding the contract to Greenscape Six of Baytown in the amount of $2,397,669.50 for the, for the concrete pavement project. The proposed change order number one, in the amount of minus $60,900, is needed to adjust quantities for eight-inch concrete repair and six-inch, inch concrete repair due to the existing concrete pavement depth on various streets. No additional days will be added to the contract for the additional work. If approved, change order number one will result in a new contract amount of $2,336,700, excuse me, $2,336,769.50. Funds are available in the street rehabilitation program of the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Boone, can you kind of explain to the citizens how can they go on the internet and look up the improvements that we actually made in the city?
Yes, sir. So, and Mr. Barkovia could probably help me out as well. But we are, you know, we do have in this budget $8 million for this type of work. And, but to get the information out, I believe we have some maps on the Public Works site which shows exactly, you know, where this work is, has been done.
All of our roadway work is on the Public Works section of the City of Beaumont website. We have the maps. We have what's been done in the past, what we're currently working on, and what's to come that's been approved by council. And so that's written out in terms of roadways from this section to this section, as well as the maps that show in color code what, what's been done.
Anything else? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. At this time, I will read. At the close of the City Council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating our pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, GADV, Inc., DBALNL General Contractors versus the City of Beaumont, Cause Number 8-0207973, Subrogation of Jaton Smith, Kendrick Fletcher, Shaquilla Mitchell, Israel Agurela, and Tyler Woods. Consider matters contemplating to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code, to which specifically land owned by the City of Beaumont at 701-555-MAINTEN, Beaumont, Texas, Jefferson County. Thank you. Now is the time for any citizen that would like to make public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. You will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your three minutes, the green light will come on, and that will notify you that it is the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
Michael Fennell, 3255 Cartwright, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. African-Americans make up about 13% of the workforce in, in America. That's 36 million out of 278 million. I would like to invite anyone in the City of Beaumont and the surrounding area to my court hearing on June 7, 2022. The time is 10 o'clock a.m. Of course, like I said, we know that I'm pro-saint. The opposing attorneys trying to get information from me in order to retaliate against the rest of the African-Americans that are inside, back, that went back inside the refinery. I've done my best to try to protect the information and do some things. I've been through this situation. That's how I was able to be, that's how they terminated me. What they do is they coerce, they confuse, they gaslight, they move the goalposts, they change the rules and tell you, that they tell you. And then they get information from you, and they use that information against you. I'm afraid that they're going to fire and retaliate against a whole bunch of African-Americans if they get specific information that I don't have on my person at the moment. But it will, they, they will try to get it. I'm concerned about the tactics that they're using because I filed discrimination against them, but I continue to be the victim when it comes to these judges and how they're proceeding in these actions. I'm no fool. I didn't live to be 48, you know, being a fool. I see what they're doing. The problem is, is abating what they're doing. If anybody's available, I have a group. Of course, we know that I've only given you one of several outlets that I have. And if anybody's available, if anybody wants to come and see what these people are doing. And like I said, I, I just don't know. I have not been able to figure out why this hate in this area exists. Notice, we have the first and only black African-American plant manager in the history of ExxonMobil in Beaumont, Texas, and that's for a reason. They know I have that answer, and they're trying to squeeze it out of me. But I'm gonna stand strong. I'm gonna do my best to protect those people, and I just won't quit. I won't stop. They can do whatever they want to do. They can crush me, but they can't crush everybody. So that's all I have to say for today.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell.
Oh, I'm sorry. That location will be 300 Willow Street, June 7, at 10 o'clock a.m. I know the time is kind of iffy. They've been putting a time where they know most people will be working. I don't think it's an incident, but, you know, we'll do what we can.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a council member comment, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Neal.
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
It's a great day in Beaumont.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschah.
As been said, we're going into hurricane season. All the citizens, just please consider hurricane preparedness as we go into this, I believe they stated that the update above-average season, so please be prepared.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Boone, on last week, I requested the process with reviewing our parks. I want to be aware of, you know, how, how does that process work? When do we go out and look at it? Once we find something, what are our findings? What's the next step to, do we put in work orders, the whole nine? I just want to request again because I really want to make sure that process is fluent. I want to make sure we keep the city out of any liabilities with, you know, damaged park equipment and kids maybe playing on it. So if I can, I would like to see that process and if we make, if we're following and doing everything properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate Emily Wheeler and Dean Conwell on putting on a great Hispanic Heritage Festival. I think we call it Artaco. I wasn't able to attend, but I've heard so many reports of how well it went off and how favorably it was received that I couldn't help but give a shout out to them and hope we can do it again next year, bigger and better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duryo. Councilmember Doria.
Yes, you stole what I wanted to say, Mike, but I actually was able to attend the Artaco event, and it was very nice. Great food, great music, great people. Really enjoyed it, and the staff did a great job putting it on.
Thank you. City Manager?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney? Thank you. So, of course, when you speak last, you get to hear it again. Spanish Heritage Festival was a great success. Again, want to commend Emily Wheeler and also Dean Conwell for putting on a great event. I was unable to attend also. My daughter graduated in Houston from college, so I would not miss that. But unfortunately, I would have loved to have been there. And also, we were in emergency management training this morning, and please, 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 get prepared. Hurricane season starts June first. We want to be prepared, although I believe in God that we will not get a hurricane. We will not see a hurricane, okay? I just finished completing my house about four or five months ago. Don't want to do that again. But please register your cellphones. As Ms. Noble said, this is the time to get prepared. Make sure that you have your batteries, because everyone is going to go out at the last minute and try to find batteries. Supplies are still low in a lot of areas, so we want to be prepared. Make sure that you have water. But most importantly, make sure that you register your cellphones. We discovered that a lot of people have not registered their cellphones, and make sure that you register your landlines, because in the case of an emergency, that is your only way of communication. Also, would like to say that with the tragedy that happened in Buffalo, New York, we want to keep those people in prayer, and just uplift that area and that community in prayer. If that is all, we will recess into executive session, and thank each and every one of you for coming out today, and again, spread the love. Thank you.